Are close enough to being straight up five o'clock if you will stand and join me for the flight salute, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We will call the meeting to order. Whoops, I just lost. I don't think I really need a, a wind cover in here. Um, call the meeting to order and, um, ask first, council, you've all had the opportunity to review the agenda. Uh, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as submitted?
Uh, so moved.
Second?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none? Uh, all in favor of the agenda as is, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Uh, unanimous aye. Uh, let's go into the consent agenda, which will consist as indicated of the minutes from our last meeting, uh, approval of the, uh, warrants from, uh, in the amount as shown, payroll in the amount as shown, and the, uh, February monthly financials. Um, any want, they want to pull anything out of that for discussion at this time?
I have a couple of questions on, uh, well, I guess it's a total of six different charges.
Okay, on the, uh, payment of warrants?
Yep.
Any, uh, any objection to, um, uh, moving to, uh, Councilman Burkholder's questions with regard to some payments? No objection, go ahead.
Okay, uh, the first one was on page three. It's about midway down, there were three charges on there for boots. Like one was at Vanderbilt's, one said Red Wing, and one was Tractor Supply. I was just curious what-
Electrical.
Electrical, okay. And then on page four, there was a charge, it was flag shooter. It's like two hundred and eighty-seven, sixty-five, and it was three different times, I was just curious.
For locating, for locating, find flags.
Say that again?
It's a locating, for locating, find flags.
Okay, okay.
And we got a, a new gun.
Gotcha.
For the marking, painting, everything.
Okay, cool. I ju- I was just curious what it was. That's, that's all I had.
Yeah. Anyone else have any questions about that? All right, thank you. Um, the agenda is on the screens in front of you, and I think there are still some copies on the, um, bandstand out there wherever the lectern, uh, if anyone doesn't have one. Does anyone have any public, any comments with regard to matters that are on the agenda for tonight?
I'm sorry.
Okay, come on up and take. We went through this last time, so I think we agreed we'd just be formal, so please state your name and, uh, what it is you're wanting to talk about.
Okay, Ruth Herbl, and I just have a couple of questions that, first, I'd, I seen the one that was on the, um, payment sheet for eighty-nine thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars for a loader or a skid. When was that approved by council?
It was in the budget for this year, I'll defer to Mark if you have a-
Actually, it was, it was in last year's budget approved, and it was a skid loader for the public.
Okay, but isn't it a fact that it's appropriated, money appropriated for that use, but it doesn't have to be spent? And it should be authorized by the council to spend it?
They're au- being authorized tonight.
We, we've had that discussion. Uh, I think Ruth, when something is into the budget, uh, my personal feeling, and we've not talked about it as council, that's gonna be something we're gonna talk about next week at our study meeting. But, in my opinion, if it's in the budget for a department, uh, to buy something, and they have the opportunity to buy that thing, and they clear it through the city administrator, which is done, then that's not something that has to be run through the city council. Now, we could say, well, yeah, we could, yeah, but we want to put some dollar amounts on it, because as long as it's under a certain amount or whatever, and that's a discussion I think we need to have.
Okay, well, I hope you covered that at work session.
Yeah.
But also included in the budget is a raise for the city employees. And in the handbook for Marion, it says the council has to approve that, so this goes against what you're trying to say.
Well, that's a raise, not a purchase.
But it's still in the budget, and the money's appropriated.
I, 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 I think there's some distinction there, but I get your point.
Okay, all right, let's move on to that. I just have a few questions that I'd like to make to the minutes in the, of last meeting, the public hearing, those attending. I'd like to see Ron and Ruth Herbl's name added, Gene Winkler's name, Brian Bina, and Don Wilson, and Stephen Wilson added, as people that were attending. On the regular meeting, I would like to see Brian Bina's name added, you know, he was there, okay. And then, um, at the bottom of page one, I'd like to see a heading inserted that says executive session. Everything has a, a heading on that minute except that particular item, and it just draws your attention to it right away. And then the last item I'd like to, um-
Can I cut you off for a second?
Certainly.
And we'll come back to that. I've, I'm asking you this question, Mark, 'cause when I was looking through those minutes, I noticed that there was a list of, you know, not just the council members and people that spoke and so on, but people that were, I guess you'd say, in the audience.
Attending, yeah.
Um, is that standard or normal, or to have that, to try to literally make sure you've got every human being that was setting out, watching the meeting listed as, as being there in the minutes?
Unless they spoke, in, in previous seasons I've been in, we didn't put them in. And you have a sign-in sheet, I guess you could get a sign-in sheet if they signed in. We never had, we didn't have sign-in sheets.
Yeah.
It's like if you had a big public meeting with fifty people, I don't know, like, uh, the people, if everybody talks, they're always identified.
Yeah.
You get something to look into.
Go ahead.
Okay, I just think it's important, because like at the public hearing, I think that the public needs to know that there was actually people that were interested and had come and attended that meeting. Okay, on the last regular minutes, the public forum, I made a statement that I would like the council to consider purchasing the two thousand and nineteen. I'd like to insert that instead of the word "old." Old to me des- describes something that's wore out. This is a truck that's four and a half years old, and that's all I'm asking, is that instead it says, "Ruth Herbl asked council members to consider purchasing the old bucket truck." You know, six months down the road, I want to look back at these minutes and say, "Old, well, what, what year was that?" And I'd like for him to say that, uh, purchasing the two thousand and nineteen bucket truck when the lease expires, October twenty twenty-four.
I'd, I'd like, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, 'cause that's when it expires. She said when the lease is up.
Well, the council's already approved the minutes, um, but that doesn't mean that we can't, um, go back and say that, hey, there's been a request to make some changes, and if those changes are accurate. Uh, the ones that the council feels are relevant, uh, maybe they all are, but I'm just saying that if we can change the minutes now, we don't have to say, oh, we've already done it. Um, so, I, council, what are your thoughts?
I don't have a problem with the changes that she suggested.
Um, Ruth, walk me, let's walk back through, um, the, you, you, you had some suggestions as to additional people that should have been listed a- as being in attendance.
At, at least at the public hearing, 'cause I think it's important that people know that people attend those.
You, well, okay, and, and those names that you gave were?
Uh, Ron and Ruth, Gene Winkler, Brian Bina, and Don Wilson and his son Steve, Stephen.
I don't think Don was here for the public, for the public hearing, 'cause he showed up late, I thought, right? That day he was.
Okay, and then what was the, the, you didn't like the use of the word "old," you wanted the twenty-nine, I mean, the nineteen.
Twenty nineteen.
Yeah, okay.
And the lease expires October twenty twenty-four. These are facts on that particular thing that I'll look back six, eight months from now and find out, you know, what we actually did.
So those are the, the changes that you would suggest be made?
Maybe di- everybody doesn't really review the minutes like I do, but I read them quite often.
The, the minutes should accurately reflect, uh, the actions of the council, and how you got to that point, and what the action taken was. It's not a transcript, and if we needed a transcript, I'd get a court reporter in here, and we'd have a word for word, uh, but the, the, we have, these are all being recorded, so in terms of going back and seeing every little detail, anybody who wants to can go back and look at it, but that's okay.
Well-
The, I, I, I get, yeah, I sp- I would agree with you that probably if we've got more than one loader, or excuse me, bucket truck, um, saying the old one, we can identify what that is, but it would make more sense to just have the years, I have no problem with that. So I, I'm gonna make the motion that we make the, uh, change the am- amend the minutes as requested by Ms. Herbl to reflect the attendance of, uh, the Herbels, Mr. and Mrs. Herbl, Mr. Winkler, Mr. Bina, and Don Wilson, and your son's name, Stephen Wilson. And, um, also that we en- include in the, um, description, the, uh, with regard to the truck that were, the old truck is the twenty nineteen truck, and that the lease expired October twenty-fourth. That's my motion.
It was-
Okay.
There was also Brian Bina and, you know.
Did I not mention, I mentioned Bina.
Well, in regular session. We need to mention him because he was in the executive session.
I thought you said that the only thing you were really concerned about was the public meeting portion.
Okay.
Well, if you didn't say that, then that's why I understood.
I did, I did say that.
Okay.
But people, people's gonna wonder what, why he was mentioned in the executive session, but he wasn't mentioned in the, with the people. You know, he has to be present in order to go to the executive session. I just think it's important that those people-
Okay. The people I just named, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Herbl, um, Mr. Winkler, Mr. Bina, and Don Wilson, and Stephen Wilson, w- is that number, are those people the people that you want to be, to have shown?
Yes.
For everything, okay.
For the public hearing.
I will amend my motion to include all those people. Is there any problem, uh, who seconded it? Tim?
I'm seconded here as amended.
Okay. All right. Motion as amended. Any other comments? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Real quick, I don't think we ever actually approved the consent. We just had a discussion.
Well, then it, then it makes it all the way. Right. All right, do I have a motion to approve the consent?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Thank you. Uh, Mr. Case is here with regard to the EMC insurance. I won't like you anywhere, but I would wish you would sit over there.
I would be glad to. So I realized, uh, the other day that only one of you sitting before me has heard the, um, any of my insurance proposals, that'd be Zach Callitt, the rest of you are all new. Um, I'm not gonna bore you too badly, although most insurance is pretty boring, but I do wanna briefly go through and make you all aware of the different coverages that EMC provides through the package. Mark and I have, um, sat down a couple of times and have gone through it, and I think he felt, felt pretty comfortable with, with what we have. Um, you should have all got a, a couple of pages that I sent. Um, I'll just give you a little history. Um, Case and Son provides insurance through the EMC Insurance Company. EMC insures about ninety percent of the cities in the state of Kansas, and has been the clear leader in this market for nearly thirty years. We have delivered dividend checks to the city for sixteen consecutive years totaling two hundred and two thousand seven hundred and forty-seven dollars for an average of twelve thousand six seventy-two per year, including last year's check in the amount of fifteen thousand four hundred and ninety dollars and six cents. Um, this means that EMC and the city of Marion has had a pretty good loss history, so that's why the dividend check is basically a, a little rebate you get back every year. So there have been many challenges in the insurance industry in the last few years. COVID was a driving factor in a lot of that, increased building costs, labor costs, transportation costs, and the continuing cycle of severe weather has caused what we call a hard market. This has led to higher premiums, increased deductibles, and the tightening of the insurance market. Effective at your April first renewal, the property deductible for the city will increase to a twenty-five hundred, the twenty-five hundred dollars deductible is not an increase, that's what it has been the last few years, but they're adding a ten thousand dollar wind hail deductible per occurrence. So, uh, the good news with this is that the property premium has decreased by about three thousand dollars. Other lines of coverage have seen slight increases, and I'm just gonna go down the line here and tell you what you have. You have commercial property coverage, which, um, ensures all the buildings and the personal property that the city owns, and the, the second commercial property is the, uh, property out at the airport, the airport, the airplane hangars and such. You've got general liability insurance, you've got business auto, you've got commercial inland marine that covers your mowers and tractors, things like that. You've got a commercial umbrella policy coverage, which goes over the top of the, of all of your other coverages, hence the word umbrella. You've got government crime coverage, you've got a linebacker policy, which is another word for E and O coverage, which covers all of you as council members for errors and omissions. We've got law enforcement liability coverage, and we've got cyber solutions, which is a data processing thing if you have a data breach, um, and a lot of your customers' information get out there, you've got coverage for that. So, all of those make up your package. This year's renewal premium is a hundred and twenty-four thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars, up about four thousand dollars from last year. So, all in all, I'm pretty, thought that was pretty good news, and Mark seemed to agree with me. Um, I think you guys are-
Yeah, Mark, it's true, good news, and I like that Mr. Case, who are working with our folks on the application in the, of made on the buildings and things.
Yeah, Jan kinda sorta got thrown into the fire, the, this year of all years EMC, um, wanted building, uh, questionnaires done for every piece of property. Your bill, your roof, your wiring, plumbing was updated, all that good stuff, and, uh, there's not many people that are still alive that know that. So, anyway, we, we got through it the best we could, so. Any questions?
Questions for Mr. Case?
No.
I'm ne-
You guys all know where you can find me, and if you ever want to talk about the city's insurance, I'd be glad to.
Lanning's Pharmacy?
We can talk over there. You can come to my office, wherever.
Um, Mark, uh, is, is the intent for Casey to present this, or for us to go ahead and approve it tonight?
We can go ahead and approve it tonight.
Okay. Um, you've got it in front of you, um, any, again, do you have any questions, ask them? If not, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the EMC insurance renewal through Case and Son's insurance.
At the amount quoted, right?
Yes, at the quoted amount.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It's a unanimous vote. Ayes have it. Thank you, Casey.
Thank you, Mr. Case.
Thank you for being here to present that.
Um, on the agenda is a library board appointment, and the, uh, library board has requested appointment of Mark Hall, uh, to serve a two-year term that would end April thirty of twenty twenty-eight. Um, any discussion with regard to, to that?
You just said a two-year term, you mean a four-year term? Just for clarification.
I said two years.
Yeah, you said two.
It's a four-year term.
It's a four-year term.
Yeah, he's replacing Mary Griffith. Um, I take it if he's replacing Mary, then Mary's term must be ending. Do you know, Janet?
I don't know. It must be.
Okay. Anything?
I'm assuming they've talked to Mr. Hall.
I think that would be really rude if he did something like that. Um, something else for our works, our study session, make sure they ask the person before they send denomination in. Um, I, I talked to Mr. Hall a- about things, but not about the li- library board, but I, I know he wants to get involved, uh, more in the community now that he's retired, so I assume that's probably part of what this is. I, I will, um, at this point, move to appoint Mark Hall to the library board. Is there a second?
I seconded.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Unanimous approval. Um, with regard to item eight, this, the municipal judge vacancy, the, um, little bit of background, uh, the municipal judge from Marion had been, uh, Randy Pancratz for several years. Randy is an attorney in Newton. Um, during the term, well, he resigned, um, and the person appointed, and I literally met her briefly one time, and the, like, the next day found out she was leaving. And I'm sorry, what, what was her name?
Randy Rory Bachman.
Bachman?
Yeah, she's out of, uh-
Emporia.
She was also in Emporia prosecutor, but she's out in Emporia.
She lived in Topeka in commuter employment, yeah.
And she took the job at the city attorney.
Yeah, she's now gonna work in the city attorney's office, I think, for Topeka. Um, so obviously she didn't want to further the commute clear down here. Um, so, uh, we have an opening, and Mark and I have talked about it, and, um, hope to have someone to put before the board at the first meeting in April. So, yep, that's, that's really it on that, Mark, unless there's anything else you want?
That's all.
Okay. Um, bucket truck lease financing, Mark.
Yeah, this is, uh, something that was started last year, they, uh, the city ordered a chassis, it was sent to the Altech, the company. My, my notes indicated the original chassis about seventy, a little over seventy thousand dollars. City paid for that. Uh, the, all the improvements to bucket and all the safety equipment and, and accessories, another hundred fifty-nine thousand nine seventy-one eighty-five. So the city paid for the original truck, put down clearly on that, which, uh, left a hundred twenty-nine thousand nine seventy-two to finance over a three-year lease purchase agreement. The city, uh, fi- uh, city clerk put out bids, we had one back from, uh, Central National Bank at, at a five-point-five-nine interest rate, APR five-point-seven-three. Uh, so this will help pay for that. This, uh, this showed up early, I think this was indicated, they thought, the notes I had when I got here, they thought it'd be here in November, December, January, it showed up early. So, we're still working with Altech on the, the prior truck, that we need to get this going so we can pay for it, 'cause we have it in our possession. And I think the electric company, and we paid for it out of, out of utility fund, I think the department's really happy with it, and it will be used pri- probably primarily in the electric department, but probably elsewhere where in Newton. So we recommend you approve the lease purchase with, uh, Central National Bank.
Questions, counsel? Um, with regard to the, I was gonna say the old truck, but let me s- let me say the twenty nineteen truck, you're smiling back there.
One of the trucks.
Um, that we're, we're, you're still working with?
Yeah.
I know, I, 'cause I asked you about it, and it's apparently some phone tag back and forth.
We're placing phone tags, so we'll have that cleared up this week.
Okay.
Just the answers on-
Yeah, we'll, my-
What our options are.
We'll have, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Um, are you asking for a council vote on that at this time?
Yes, I am.
Um, I would move that, uh, we approve the proposed financing agreement for the, uh, new bucket truck. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay? Motion passes. Uh, item ten, discussion of the upcoming work session. Um, just to, for the most part, counsel, I, I thought we ought to talk about, Mark is, this is something that, uh, he has done a lot in Emporia, at least that's what he tells me. Uh, maybe you want to speak to him, maybe we start with that.
But we used to have one, regular meeting, first and third, uh, Wednesdays and study sessions, second and fourth. Uh, after I left, and different commissioners have different ideas, that was a longstanding, they now have them before, or they, they have a meeting, they move their meetings to eleven on Wednesday mornings, and they have them in the afternoon. A study session over lunch hour into the early afternoon. So they, so they're there two days. It's just something we found helpful to, you know, just discuss items before you put them on the agenda when you can, and just have some open dialogue on different things. How, how often you need, I don't think it would hurt to have them once in a while, and we could talk about that.
I, I love the idea, and I've, I've, Mark's already seen part of my list, and there's no way we're gonna get th- and he hadn't seen all of my list, just the part I showed him. Um, and we're not gonna get through all of it, but, uh, and we may, maybe we all bring our lists, and, and then we pick the ones we do want to start working on. But, um, I, I don't know that, I guess we'll just have to see whether, I don't know that Mark is proposing, I think he's not proposing that we go to, um, ha- having a me- council meeting every week, just two of them being study sessions, but I do like the idea of maybe getting on some kind of a schedule and having them on a regular basis, uh, of some sort.
Now, okay, I, again, we could talk maybe five months later, so just whatever you think is warranted.
So, I assumed that we would just set in here and just have a discussion. Mark proposed that we, you know, because it's a more, a more informal thing, that we've got that table right outside the door, a conference table. I have no idea where it came from, it just popped, showed up there one day, but someone stole a table and we're holding it for ransom, I guess, but, um, we could easily use that if you wanted to, or we could stay in here, whichever you think makes the most sense. Um, Mark had talked, why don't you talk about the way you did it in Emporia, um, in terms of, well, just talk about it.
What were you talking about? We provided lunch, some, like, in your town, we have Subway sandwiches, or you could get some sandwiches, so you can kind of eat while you're going around, go on a ride and do something, just very informal.
Anyone have, anything you'd like to request, or say that it requires any kind of, uh, preparedness? I mean, if it's just something you want to talk about, well, we'll talk about it next week, but if it's something you think we ought to have available so you can talk about it, or information, or if you feel like you need to have a department head present. At this point, I, I, I wasn't planning on requiring anybody to be here, other than Mark, um, but, well, and I suppose Janet, I-
(laughing).
Well, did you normally have your, I mean, I think, did you normally have your court presence?
Yeah, we did, and we also had whoever might have a topic to talk about.
Yeah, yeah. But at this point, I don't know if we, if you know that, that you want to talk about a particular, uh, area that falls under someone's department, this'd be a good time to say it right now, because we got most all of them here. Okay, well, I hope you have more to talk about next Monday.
We'll get it, I'm gonna start, and we'll see how it goes.
Yeah, okay. Um, that's really, that was just it, I just wanted to kind of address the fact that we're gonna have it, it's five o'clock, and for, at this point, we'll plan on setting up, um, around the, uh, the table in the other room. Okay, um-
Do you want supper? Do you want lunch? Do you want dinner?
Breakfast, whichever.
Yeah, we'll just have some, same.
My understanding is that Mark had already made that decision.
Okay.
I want brunch, can you, can you make that happen? Okay, uh, with regard to, uh, department reports, um, I guess Mark will start with you.
I just, uh, again, I want to thank Mr. Case for all his work. I filled those insurance forms out before, so I know what's involved. Uh, and I know it's a little bit of all new, but, uh, Darren at EBA helped, uh, facilitate it in a small, a hundred thousand dollar pledge grant at the airport for crack, so that's a really good thing. The li- there's, I think it's a ninety-ten, ninety-five, I think we had twelve thousand into it. Uh, so that's a wonderful thing, and I appreciate him taking care of that. He has an interest in flying and knows how it works.
Thank you, Darren.
Pardon?
The thank you, Darren.
Oh, I didn't say that, I'm sorry.
She has to say that, he's her neighbor.
Yeah.
Well, go, have we always, all things start with you, Margot. Well, go, have we always, all things start with you, Margot?
I'm having allergy attack back here. (laugh) Um, I've been trying to see what I can do about Family Dollar, but I don't know that I'm a miracle worker. Um, I met with a business today, trying to see if we can offer some funding on something they're working on, but (cough) it's busy, it's just busy. I, I got lunch about three thirty, so it's busy, got plane to do. So, if you've got questions, fine. I, I wanna come to the work session, um, I've got some stuff I need you to talk about, so.
Um, I don't mean like right now, but is anything that you wanna give us a heads up on at some point before next Monday, so that we would be able to? If you're, if it's like a question you're gonna ask, so that we could maybe have a good answer for you?
Well, I'll see what I can put together.
Well, I'm not saying you have to, just think about whether you think it would be helpful if we knew what we were gonna be talking about.
Well, um, Mark and Tim and Stephen and I, I think, might, might meet one more time this week, and then (cough) we'll have some information for you.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Fair enough.
Okay.
Anyone have any questions for Margot?
Have you gotten ahold of anybody? Have you talked to anybody at, in regards to, like, corporate, for family? No, nothing?
The, the phone lines have been all jammed up on the east coast where their corporate is, and, um, like, they're, they're, you can't leave a voicemail or anything. Um, I physically went to our store, and went to the bathroom and got the district manager's name and number off the bathroom door. Um, 'cause they, well, they didn't feel comfortable giving it to me. They said, "Well, if you go get it, then you, we didn't give it to you." And so I did, um, but I'm, and I talked to her, but she said it should have nothing to do with it, and, yeah.
So, when's the, do they know when the official closing day will be?
Well, I, I mean, I was told two months, but then, heard people been saying four weeks.
Four weeks.
And they, they put everything half price today, and so, it's, it's a little crazy, but I'm, I'm real disappointed in that. But, uh, I, I'm not worried about having an empty building, um, as long as they don't outprice it.
Right.
I think we can make something happen there if we have to, but we'll wait and see. Um, they are rebranding some of the stores. Um, maybe just have them as Dollar Trees by themselves, and so, we'll see if we get lucky enough for that.
Yeah.
Um, but I'll keep trying.
Oh, we appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Did, Margot, I, maybe I misunderstood, I, when, and when we were communicating, I had the impression that you had, had some sort of email communication. Am I wrong about that? Must be, huh?
Oh, with the Family Dollar people?
Yeah.
Um, I was hoping to get something, they told me I would, I haven't.
Oh, okay.
Um, but, you know, people have been calling, and, and, um, yeah, the best thing to do is, uh, go on their Facebook page and their website, and just fill out their survey, because you're not getting very far with the phone. So, anybody that wants to do that, and I posted something on my community enrichment page to explain that. Um, one of our citizens had checked all that out and explained it, and so I, I shared that.
You know, the argument, at least my argument, would be that, uh, you're, you've got somebody setting in a metropolitan area that doesn't have any idea about locations of, uh, of these stores particularly, but if you close Peabody, Marion, and Harrington, you're, you're closing, if you put a pin in Marion and go around in about a twenty-five mile radius, you, you, you've got three stores you're closing, and that you'd think one of those, um, if you kept one of them open, it would pick up some business from the other two. And I think the one in the middle would be the logical one to keep open, but the pro- but we've gotta get, how, how do we communicate that?
Well, and I, I made that point, and what I did communicate, um, their employees are saying the same thing. Um, but I don't, you know, when we lost Duck Walls, um, I was able to talk to corporate, and I asked them, "Did you look at our store independently? Because our store's actually profitable," and they said, "No, it was a blanket decision," and that was the end of the conversation. So, um, yeah, I don't know, but we're trying.
Zach is tired of waiting.
Uh, the only thing for the police department is Dustin starts the academy next week. Uh, he'll be there for fourteen weeks, and we've gotten some applications, we've done some interviews. We're setting up secondary interviews and background checks and all that kinda stuff for a couple of people, um, so hopefully, we're still on track to have somebody start in the middle of April.
And, and I, well, I'm pretty sure this is true, unless Mark just led me down Primrose Lane or something, but you and Mark had some time, uh, had the opportunity to get together and spend some time last week, I think?
Yeah, last Wednesday, he came by the office, and he was able to tour the building, and we had a good chat, and-
I as- I assume if there'd be anything about that you wanted to say, you would've said it already?
Yeah.
Okay, fair enough. You got any questions for us, Zach?
Uh, I have a question for Margot, I'm just curious if like the district manager's phone number was like on the bathroom door, where it said like, "For a good time call." Um, I was just sort of curious.
No, it's written in pencil, very lightly.
Let's move on, Tim?
Never go over that.
Street department, been working on-
Hey, that, that, yeah, there you go.
Been working on street repair and stuff, and, uh, I'm bad at public speaking, so, you're lucky you're getting this. Uh, we're working on gravel, and some of the gravel roads, and, and putting some millings down and stuff. We'll be starting getting a new load of hand patch here in the, maybe next week, and working on that. We've been working on the cemetery, trimming the trees in there, we're gonna hopefully finish that this week. Street sweeping's been ongoing, got some tree trimming in town going on, and electric department's still replacing some poles and stuff. And water plant's been doing some minor repair and little updating, getting some of the equipment hooked up that we've had for a while. So, everybody's pretty busy, so.
Uh, this is something that we'll probably talk about at the, uh, study meeting, um, I'll just ask it, 'cause I don't know for sure what the answer is. Um, in terms of what streets get what kind of treatment, what, you know, what street gets nothing done, what street gets, you know, we're gonna tear it out and put concrete in, what we're gonna pass, whatever. How, when's that decision made? Is it made well in advance, or is it, okay, it's spring, let's decide, or how do you do that?
Um, it's, we made a list a long time ago, probably with all streets that need attention, but like for the replacement, and the heaviest traveled and the worst shape is kinda where we're going. Uh, like at the Roosevelt and Freeburn, we chose to go ahead and finish that, so it's complete around the whole hospital back to Maine. And now, the next, we're going to be on the three hundred block of North Roosevelt is the plan, 'cause it's really bad. So, um, it's kinda the, that's how we look at it, I guess, you know, with the administrator, who knows?
Okay.
And just kinda decide what needs attention most, I guess.
That was gonna be my question, so, like, when do you do that? I- it, once a year, I assume you do that, but-
Well, when they, uh, like every year, we try to budget so much for complete replacement, and then, then we kinda decide how far we can go, how much we can do.
Okay, so it's part of the budget process?
Yes.
Okay, that makes sense. Anything else for Tim?
Just to elaborate a little bit on that, uh, for the record, Darren, Newville DBH, um, the CIP, which we come up, we started with, oh, probably ten years ago, um, we update that every one to two years, depending on what it looks like might be coming up for the streets and other infrastructure, but streets, since you're asking about that. We try to do that here about the April-May timeframes of going into budget. You guys have a chance to say, "Okay, here's what we recommend for streets that need to be done, and what needs to be done to them." Then you guys can say, "Yeah, that sounds good, no, it doesn't, let's re-rack and stack," and then that way, going into your budget session, you know, kinda, and we put together a cost estimate on each type of, um, repair or maintenance that needs to be done to those.
CIP, comprehensive infrastructure, what is it?
Capital improvement.
Capital improvement, sorry.
Capital improvement plan, okay.
See, you threw me off, we go comprehensive there, Mike, sorry.
I'm sorry, I was just trying to guess.
Yeah, capital improvement plan.
Capital improve, okay.
And like I said, we do that for other infrastructure areas, if it looks like we're having a need for it. Streets happens to be the one we do every one to two years, the longest. But we've got a CIP section for water, sewer, airport, streets. We did it for each one here a couple of years ago.
Um, do we know where that plan is? I guess I'm looking at you, Mark, but that's unfair.
We-
I was gonna say, but we'll find it.
We have it, it was on previous administrators' computers via email. Uh, where it is at now, we'll get you another copy of the last one, those, I don't remember if we updated it last year on streets. Uh, last year, they kinda already had in mind, and when I say that, Zach might be able to answer this better, the council kinda said, "Uh, this is the ones we're gonna do this year." So, we really didn't, end up doing a new CIP, uh, rack and stack with, with scoring, 'cause we go through and score streets based on a number of factors. So, it's not, "Oh, hey, we're just picking this randomly." It, it has to do with, like Tim said, the, the type of vehicles that drive it, the weights, the number of traffic counts. Is it just a residential, is it a artillery street, you know, what's its function?
Yeah.
And so, last year, I don't believe we re-scored the streets, so it's probably time to do that again here this year. But, uh, and then we also like to throw the costs on, so you guys know what you might be facing.
I, I just think that it'd be something good to look at.
Sure.
Yeah.
I agree.
Well, uh, and I, you had asked that question to me, if we still had those to get over here, and I haven't had a chance to dig them out yet since I was gone last week, but-
Yeah.
We will get a copy sent to Janet and Mark with whatever, you know, the, the last one was that we did.
Thank you. It, well, Darren's there with the mic, anybody else have any questions for Darren?
I had also, well, back to Tim, kind of a little bit, um, and I can't remember the gentleman's name that had come down several times complaining about the dust at the city.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So, I did talk to Tim, and they put some millings down on that, on the north drive to try that, and they went from the street to the water plant, and then, so, at least we can kinda see if that makes a difference. And Tim seemed to think if it would, then maybe they would do that south drive then as well, but I think the north one was probably where the majority of that guy's dust was coming from, so. So, they did, did, didn't you, did you just do that today?
This morning.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay.
So, so, anyway.
Uh, we talked about that when you gave me the tour, uh, and I, I was gonna be disappointed if you hadn't told me that you'd done it, but if you just did it today, I guess I can't expect it that quick.
Yeah, so, at least we can try and see if that makes a difference.
Well, yeah, I, I mean, we had a good discussion, I bet you guys did too, about what you can do in that situation. If, if you buy a house near a big gravel lot, you've purchased a house near a big gravel lot. Uh, but we should do what we can, can do, but we can't pave the thing.
Right.
I mean, well, I, we can, but-
Yeah.
There's gonna be a lot of people wanting roads fixed, that aren't gonna be happy with it. Thank you. Um, anything else from anyone? Jan, Janette? All right, we will then go to public forums, so anyone want to, uh, speak on any topic at all? Oh, I'm sorry, I gotta go back. Um, there is a lu- youth leadership, uh, like the, um, what was it called, the-
Marion County Leadership.
Marion County Leadership, they have a youth version of it, um, that is going to be meeting with the county commission this coming Thursday at one fifteen. Uh, I found out about this, this afternoon, but they would like someone from this group to be there. I'm, I'm gonna be in, uh, Junction City that day. Tim was on the leadership Marion County group. Um, I asked him if he could manage to be there, but there'll be, there's no reason why it can't be more of you, I-
What, what day was it you said?
This coming Thursday at one fifteen. Okay, so, we-
I'm gonna try to, I should be able to.
Okay. And, and then finally, um, Janet, do you know whether we are paying for the Marion sign that's located at the intersection of Third Street and Highway fifteen? Well, we've got a sign on some farmer's property, and-
Is that, what was that last name? It started with G, didn't it?
Geiger.
Geiger.
Is that the one, is that location?
No, that's not the one.
That's not the right location. We can't figure that one out. Um, I used to have the file, but a, a former employee took it, so I, I don't know, but we're trying to figure it out.
Yeah, we are, working on it.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm just throwing it out there, that if we are paying, and I assume we are, unless someone just is, out of goodness of their heart, said, "Yeah, you can put the Marion sign there," and if they did, then we have no pull whatsoever, but if we're paying to have it there, then I, I, I want to talk to that landowner, um, about the signs that he's allowing to being put right below it. Um, and it, because there's the big sign that says Marion, um, I, Marion County, I saw the Flint Hills or whatever, um-
Yeah, Marion County, I saw of the Flint Hills.
Yeah, um, so, I'm, that's, just telling you, heads up, I'm trying to figure that out, I guess. Okay, public forum.
We're gonna do the counselor, counselor and report.
I am really trying to get this over with quickly, aren't I? Hold on to that thought. I'll start with you, Amy.
Um, I don't have anything, sorry for my-
The only thing I have is, um, we went out of town this last weekend to Denver, and it just makes me appreciate living in a small town, specifically Marion. You know, seeing people you know, and, and even people you don't know that are just friendly to you, um, that's all I've got.
Nothing. It's gonna be short, I don't have anything either.
Okay, now's your shot.
Yeah, I'm, I'm Terry Cheezick, um, on the airport board, and I like to schedule like a work day and get some dirt, fill in some of the sink holes on the grass runways. The other board members are willing to donate their time and equipment to do it, we just need, need some dirt hauled out there, and just need to see if there's any, if we get permission, or if there's any liability issues or anything of us doing ourselves, or if we gotta work with the city, or what.
Well, I, my, I'm just gonna shoot from the hip here, and say I think it would be better if you work in conjunction with the city, um, as far as, um, you know, having you folks help. Um, if you wanna get technical enough, you could probably make a concern there, but, uh, volunteer help, we'll, we'll figure that part out, okay? Um, Tim, uh, do you know Mr. Cheezick?
I know of him.
Know of him, (laugh) okay. Well, does what you know make you wanna talk with him? (laughing).
Yeah, but, you know, now, now's the time to do it, when everything's green enough and growing to get, get stand the grass. Just trying to get the ball rolling, and getting some of the dips filled in from the runways.
Wh- um, what, how much dirt are we talking about?
Like a dump truck load, or?
Oh, well, they hauled ten loads out last time, and-
They had how many?
They had washed out, so, so we need at least that much more and on more.
Um, maybe, Mark, could I hand that ball to you, and let you coordinate with Tim and, and Mr. Cheezick, and-
Probably get Darren involved in that, maybe. Maybe we were the last time we hired somebody to do it, um, it just, like I said, it, it, it's tough when you put dirt in a pothole and keep it there.
How long did it last?
What happened is, well, number one, we didn't even touch what we really probably needed to do. Um, it's kinda one of those that, really to do it right, you really need to reshape the whole darned grass runway. But then you're gonna lose that stand of grass that's out there, so you're kinda playing a guessing game, is to, okay, do we take the chance of ever regrow the grass entirely, and do, you know, forty or fifty thousand dollars worth of dirt work, get it reshaped right, or do you try to fill in the holes first, to see if that makes it, you know, more manageable? So, we kinda took step one last time, and said, "Okay, let's go out there and try to level and some dirt into the hole, and let the grass keep growing." It should get, get huddled up a little bit, but it didn't take care of the problems.
And how long ago was that?
My last fall.
I was gonna say, early level fall, when they, when they all that out there, was it like always September?
Yep.
Yeah, early, early fall.
Wow.
We just had, we have three, just per, knowledge purposes, we have three grass runways, plus a grass taxiway. So, we have way more grass, airfield service, and we do pavement, and so, it's not like, "Oh, hey, we just have this, you know, thirty foot wide by several hundred foot long grass area that needs dirt." Oh, it's, it's, and we add it all up, it's several miles of fifty foot wide grass area that needs dirt, so there's just a lot of area out there to do this.
Where did you get the dirt from last time, Tim? Do we have the dirt?
We have some, yeah.
Okay.
Why do we have that? Is it different directions, in case, depending on what the wind's doing?
It's, it's all wind directional, mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, I did not know we had three separate- Um, I did not know we had three separate grass runways.
Yes, we actually technically have four runways.
Are they used quite often, the grass?
I'm gonna defer that to the pilot community some little bit more.
Well, they're getting almost unusable with all the dips. I mean, we're laying in at sixty, sixty to eighty mile an hour and then you drive your car at forty and you go up to the airport and just drive your car down there.
It, right now, a lot of the guys were using it because the asphalt was in such poor condition. But we got that granite, so that's what you hope, take care of that for a couple of years.
Right.
So they won't have to use the grass as often, but some guys still like using the grass because you can see their own tires. So they only use it if it lets wear and tear on the tires.
Coming to a couple of board meetings and a lot of the guys said that they like to use them because of the wear and tear.
Especially, especially the asphalt community.
Okay.
Um, I have no problem with helping out and putting some dirt out there personally, I mean, I think, we can talk about that. But I, I just wonder, um, if we're gonna be doing this every six months for eternity or, or what's, what's the long-term fix?
The, the long term is we completed the master plan for the airport here a couple of years ago. The long term is we actually, but we're, we're, we applied for KDOT funding, just like we did the asphalt repair. We've applied to do the next steps in that master plan, which long term gets us to where one of the turf runways goes away because we're gonna build a new main runway. And so, and then during that main runway build, we can actually rehab the turf runway. So, part of that answer says, "How soon will KDOT fund the next step?" We've applied for it twice now and not, we've been successful in the last two years. That being said, um, I, I, I haven't seen if it's passed the House yet. It, it came out of the Senate committee and it passed the Senate committee, KDOT, um, aviation, so it's airport money that cannot be touched by other KDOT or moved around by the governor. Um, they, they went, they, they've been funding airports for the last twenty years at five million dollars a year. That's how much money they had to spend on all Kansas airports, KDOT aviation. The proposal that's out there now and should pass is gonna raise that to fifteen million dollars a year. So, with three times the money, there's gonna be more projects funded. So we hope that now that puts Marion in a better spot to take those next steps and, and get some funding. And if we can get funding for those other projects, then part of this, you know, five to seven years from now kinda goes away. So, it's not like we're gonna be doing dirt repairs for the import duty. But in the near term, if we wanna keep the pilots in good shape and we don't have any more accidents out there.
Safe, yeah.
We've had a couple of tail issues on the, on the asphalt runway.
I, I, I was speaking just for myself, but I, I feel like that we have a, that that airport's an asset to the community. And, um, I don't, I'm really not one to speak very well on this, 'cause I, you know, I'm not a pilot or anything. But I think it's better than, uh, most small towns have, um, or at least it was better than. And hopefully, we'll get the asphalt fixed up. But I think we need to try to maintain that if we can. So what I'm asking the council is, um, is there any, I don't think it makes council action to, uh, I think the city administrator can orchestrate that in cooperation with the city superintendent, anyone have any issue with that?
No.
Okay, so, um, this is Mr. McInerney, um, he's the, our city administrator. Um, and what I would suggest is call the city office and so that you guys can be able to communicate with each other and then we'll go from there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else on the public forum? We took that to a little bit of an extreme there.
In one of your future work sessions, if you'd like to, or with Mark, and if you'd like to have all of those work sessions, kind of a overall airport master plan, do you do, do you have one of those?
I like, that's a good idea.
Be on the whole, what the, what the far end game is, plan for the airport.
Uh, I, I think Darren, that would be, and Mark, yeah, let's, let's do it. We gotta start on that whenever you guys wanna start on it, 'cause we gotta get through all these things at some point in time. Okay, anyone else, any comments? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'm moving adjourned, Steve.
Second?
A second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passed.